I'm here before you because it is the time of year where the city begins to plan for rolling its bond anticipation notes in May as well as to produce the funding needed for the adopted capital budget. In the legislative request before you, it shows that we are looking for approximately 4.5 million in general fund and sewer fund capital projects. And this year, unlike last year, we do have a bond anticipation note that was issued in 2009 that must be permanently financed, so we're going to be going into the bond market for that. That's $25.5 million. That's the 2009 ban since the original issue year. And then we are recommending, from a standpoint of efficiency and the read of our financial advisor of the market, to also include permanently financing our 2010 bans, because they will have to be permanently financed next year. Their power amount is somewhat less, so there's efficiency to combining those two together right now, and the 2014 adopted budget, the debt service budget, would support that. So that is what is before you right now. We're recommending that we issue a ban to fund the 2014 capital projects and then roll the existing bans except for the 2009 and 10s, which we will be permanently bonded. Excuse me.
Questions? Mr. Reedy.
Do you have an estimate of what the annual payment's gonna be for this?
The annual payment for which piece of the bonds?
Well, for the bonds.
Yes, I...
Because the total's about 70 million, isn't it? Of course we put the bands and the bonds.
Well, I have an estimate for permanently financing the 2009 and 2010, and over the life, that would be a principal of slightly over 37 million, and annual interest that would total approximately 22.2 million.
And what's the reason again for going with 2010?
Next year, we're going to have to do the 2010s for sure. So, in the 2010 par is around 11.6. So, just from the economy of scale, knowing where the market is right now, throwing it in and doing the bonds, one issuance of bonds this year that's a little greater is a good move, because the next year, we just have to do the bands, or depending on how the market is, if we decide to do any bonding. But we have the ability to do that because of the 2014 adopted budget has sufficient debt service, and the way the market is right now, it looks like we could probably get around 4 percent, which is a really pretty good rate.
You think it'll be more next year, is that what they think?
Well, it's really hard to say, Mr. Reedy.
Just the trend has been upward, even though people have said it's gonna go upward, it has not gone up as fast as people thought. It's historically low rates, and it seems to be somewhat inappropriate timing for us to move them now.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this. All right, I will second it. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else to come before the Finance Committee, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Ms. Porterfield, would you mind if we move Health and Rec up? Miriam is here, but she just got back from vacation, so we can get it in and out.
Okay, call the order Health and Recreation. So, we'll move forward to the top of the agenda here.
Gotcha, sure.
Okay. So, we started last week, last two weeks ago, to be discussing the Affirmative Action Board, so I thought we should have some more discussion regarding that. It's a board that was off the list of boards that we're considering, that we consider obsolete, but we just felt that it's a board that needs to remain. So, one of the, you said some information and asked that there be some, considered some changes to the makeup of the board. So, I just want to know what, you know, what the reason was for the changes and, you know, the value of that.
Well, what I decided is that instead of the board consisting of nine members, we're bringing down to seven members, and I had listed, I don't know whether you have a copy of it, of the different membership that we would like on there. And it is, what I've done basically is reiterate that we want the seven members simply for the fact of feasibility of working with a group, and the larger the group, and usually it is the more difficult to get a quorum, and I noticed that there's been some issues with getting a quorum with other boards, and seven people, I think it's pretty much manageable to have them come. And it's not so much the numbers that I wanted you to focus on, and I really wanted you to focus on Section E where it talks about membership. We don't necessarily want a particular member to join to represent one group, and I would very much appreciate that everyone represent the city as a whole. That's really what the focus of the change really would be. And understand that if you're serving on the board, if you were asked to serve on the board to represent women's interests, you're not just representing women's interests, but you're representing the community as a whole. So, that's what I would very much appreciate, that the council focus on when reconstituting this board.
Is there any discussion regarding this board? Ms. Carraso?
I recognize Ms. Kojic's point, because we had such issue with the police board too, but I also thought what you recommended is to keep the legislation as it is, and if we have trouble filling it, then reduce it. I don't see where any group of people isn't being, you know, supported by the, apparently it's very much Monday, by the reduction of the board. I mean, all people are still being, you know, represented, but if we have nine people that wanna serve, that would be great. If we don't, then I don't see any harm in reducing the number of the board.
Ms. Kojic, I also want to reiterate that service on this board requires HR, human resource experience, and whether currently employed or retired, and when you have professionals serving on a board such as this, and you're looking at the timing for them to be on there, they're gonna have to meet during business hours. Because of the nature of this board, I don't know whether you've considered that part of it also. Getting nine professionals to serve on this is gonna be a little bit challenging as well, so consider that. And also, the board as is does not have Section E where we're requesting membership to understand that they are servicing the entire community. I would very much appreciate to have that language included as well.
Any other questions?
Ms. Kojic, you gave some details that we are not a part of the legislation we had in terms of meeting, in terms of the requirement of the board members all have to experience with HR. Where's that particular language?
It's not in here, but understand that you're dealing with civil rights laws, you're dealing with employment laws, you're dealing with contracts, contracts laws. These are the issues that the Affirmative Action Office handles on a day-to-day basis, and anyone serving on that board will need to have that level of experience. To basically have someone that does not have affirmative action, or employment, or human resource, or contract compliance experience is very challenging. That would require my office to basically teach and explain to them what does affirmative action do. I'd very much like this board to get going from the moment it's on board, because I don't want to have to take that time to have to explain to members, okay, here are the affirmative action laws, here are the employment laws, and here are the things. And that takes time for the board to get going on what we need to be doing for the city.
Mr. Coach.
Thank you. What about somebody with a legal background, legal experience on this board?
That would be great. One or two lawyers on this board would help us, but then again, you're looking at nine, Ms. Carraso's looking at nine members. I don't know how, but I would very much appreciate to have that legal experience on the board.
And does the follow-up, if we don't have that, we would still have the, our city attorneys or the county attorneys being able to always have that?
Oh, always. This is simply city, this is not county.
Okay, all right, very good, okay.
Ms. Carraso?
I have some concern with that, because nowhere in this...
Correct.
Does it say that?
Correct.
Like, it was my experience on zoning board, certainly I'm not privy to every little nuance of our code coming out to the zoning board, but that's where Mr. Strickman, as liaison to the zoning board, would help us kind of navigate through those things. So, although I think it would be good to have some people on the board have that background, I don't know that it's necessary to have every single person, and if so, then we have to change the legislation of...
No, you don't, because it would be procedures, it's not necessarily legislation, it would be procedures.
Yeah, I just think that's where...
Again, it's at your discretion, but my preference would be that the people that serve on the board have that, John, human resource experience.
I think some of it is, that's valid, but I also think that as the affirmative action officer, you would help guide people through. You would say, this part of the law dictates this. I mean, I don't, that's just what I've, what I've experienced in boards that I've sat on in the past, like, you know, if I sat on the board of a retirement home, I don't know all the nuances of elder care, but the executive director shepherds us through that. So, I think that's a good thing to keep in consideration, but I also think that we should be open to community members, you know, I don't know.
I know, I agree with you, and I have made, I have some potential board members for you to consider if you so wish, and every one of these potential board members do have that recruitment, they have that background, that experience that I'm actually requesting that they serve, that people that serve on the board have.
And I think that's a great thing to take into consideration when we're, during the vetting process. I'm not sure it would have to be a requirement.
I don't think it should be. I mean, I think it's important that we have some people that have that level of experience, but it's also important, because everybody, we're not, it's gonna be difficult to find you have to have this background and then also fit into this category which we're talking about. So, I think to ask, to require all of that is a lot. If we say the majority needs to have that, that's a consideration, but certainly not everyone. Then that locks out a lot of people who may want to serve, who may be able to, I mean, when, when some people first come to their job, they don't have that particular experience, but they learn as they go. So, if we have someone else that teaches them as they go along, you're gonna, you would be available, I would assume, to do that. I think it's important that we make sure that we make, cast the net wide enough to get, allow anyone who may be interested and has the skills, ability, and the background, but not necessarily narrow it down to it has to be HR.
And that's what I would, that's why I would be part of that conversation, because that's another reason why I'm here tonight, so, because I do wanna be part of that conversation when it comes to putting, getting the board together.
I think, we, we, I mean, because, really, you're asking for an ideal community. Can I choose the people who are gonna come over to see what I did? That's what you're...
Well, basically, well, it is, because I have worked with, I've been on, I've been on affirmative action board before, and I have seen the kind of work that goes on there, and I have seen the good, the bad, and the not-so-happy side of the affirmative action, of an affirmative action board. It's a lot of work, and members who come in do not realize the level of work that's involved, and how importantly that everything we do, because when there is, when there is litigation involved, it is important for us to have all our teeth's caught, because anyone can come in and claim that they've been discriminated on this and that basis, but when the board is well-informed about what it needs to do, we get the job done well as a board. So, that's why I, I'm here asking you to consider, I'm not asking you, consider my recommendation to you.
Has the board been active since you've been the affirmative action officer?
No, no, there has not been a board.
Okay, so we definitely need to...
Yes, yes.
Additionally, I noticed that there was a category for disabled in the old legislation, and it's not in the new?
I don't know what you mean by new, you mean my recommendation?
Your recommendation.
My recommendation is there. It says, disabled person, veterans, governance, and collective bargaining units, and other relevant constituency.
Right.
No one ever...
Have disabled.
Yeah. It's listed in E, in Section E.
Okay, then, that's what I'm talking about, in Section D, we're spelled out.
It's not on there.
Yes, it is not. So, it's removed from there then.
Yes.
So, we spelled out every other group, and then put, kinda like put the disabled down there, so I think that we should, it was removed, and I'd like to see it back in there specifically, actually. Sure. Are there more questions? Because we're, let me further this, you know, discussion as we move forward. I think it's important that we have this board up and running, I don't know how many years it hasn't been, so that we should move forward to get that happening. So, are there other questions? And you said that, and let me just also say that people who are interested, and we did talk about the categories, please submit the resume if they can send it to my email. I will, you know, the council will consider all the resumes that are submitted, and if you have people that you'd like us to...
I will certainly forward those resumes to you.
Any other question?
Actually, it's important to all of us.
Yes, yes, I usually do, yes.
Any other questions?
Am I to do anything right here?
No, right now, we're just having some discussion, trying to sort this out.
We're not talking about specific changes to the legislation or anything at this time?
I forwarded my recommendation to the council, and it's up to the council to decide whether they wanna go with it, and if they do, they'll forward it to you.
Okay.
Yes.
The E that you've added, I understand, and I think that's extremely important, but in terms of lowering the number, at this point in time, I don't think that, we should start with nine, if we can get nine, it's wonderful, and if we can't get nine, then we consider lowering the number. That would be my thought on that. All right, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the draft legislation for the setting of the golf fees, setting rates and fees for golf courses.
Right now, if you were to take a look at Section, or Chapter 165 of the code, you would see 165-3, where there are a number of fees that are established for the golf course. And what we are discussing at this point is deleting the establishment of the fees within the code. The procedure that has been adopted by the council, I wanna say for probably a year or a little bit longer, is that the code would provide that there shall be fees, but then the fees are set from time to time by resolution, so that the, you don't need to go through the whole process of changing the code and, so, every time you wanna change the fee, and add a fee or delete a fee. And for example, the fees right now don't list anything for lessons, and we, the Golf Committee and the press is here, who have any questions, would like the ability to, you know, come in and say we need to increase this, decrease that, add this fee, delete that fee, whatever, as we have done with a number of other areas in the code. So, essentially, 165-3 will be, everything in there would be deleted, and it will be that all rates and fees associated with the golf course shall be set from time to time by the council by resolution. And we're not saying at this point that we're gonna change any, but there are some that are definitely going to be added, and depending on what the Golf Committee says, there may be some changes recommended, but ultimately, that would be up to you.
Questions?
I think it's, you know, a good idea to go ahead and change this. I think in the same time, we do need to consider, or we should consider, some of the current fees. I think one of the things I've realized over the last year or two relating to the golf course fees, is that the course is a benefit to residents of the city, so city residents get a discount. However, non-residents, we wanna make sure that our rates that we charge non-residents are not unfairly competing with tax-paying golf courses, so a stadium or any other golf course in the area, but stadium is a taxpayer in our, in our community, and if we are undercutting their prices for non-residents, we're kind of putting them at a disadvantage. You know, the city went into selling pizzas, and we sold pizza cheaper than any other pizza place in the city, we'd have a lot of upset, you know, customer, you know, constituents. So, I think that if we price our non-resident rates to be on par with market rates, I think it would not put them at such a disadvantage and allow our tax-paying businesses to actually conduct a solid business and not have competition that has an advantage. So, I think it's something we need to consider, how we price our golf fees.
Thank you. So, again, I'm assuming on this side of the board, the fees are actually distributed to council members, the current fees, were given to us somewhere previous to that?
Last year, it was like...
Also, it's not the...
It's two weeks ago, and I saw you have that same thing, because yes.
Okay, all right, so, and I'm assuming as... The Golf Committee, have they meant to, to compare what stadium's doing or what we are currently charging, and have we done that comparison anywhere?
There was a recognition of fee structure.
There is.
Went out, okay.
Two weeks ago.
Okay, so that's why I missed that. All right, so, my apologies for not receiving that this late.
We'll copy.
And then the next question, I did happen to be at the public hearing last week, or the meeting last week, where the couple folks came to the rail regarding discounts for veterans and I believe the disabled. So, are we considering that as well, hopefully within the restructure, and who do we...
It's already in the...
It's already in there, so we're all set.
For the disabled, for the disabled as well?
For veterans and seniors right now.
Veterans and seniors.
So, there isn't anything for the disabled?
Not specifically listing disabled?
Uh huh.
No.
Okay. Didn't we talk about that last time around?
We did.
And it was, I don't remember who it was, somebody in the council at the time said, how do you classify, you know, does everyone say, oh, I'm disabled, like it's a discount? I mean, you know, how you, how do you distinguish, if you're a veteran, there's proof, right? So, I'm not sure if there's...
If you're senior, there's proof.
Right.
So, that was the discussion, how is, if someone is disabled, what is the requirement?
Verification process.
Yeah, what would that be? So, we would have to...
Make sure we take all that into account.
Yes, they'd have to, I mean, I don't...
Thank you, Jason, I see your sign.
I think it's fine, but we have to figure out what, if you're a senior, you show your ID, if you're a veteran, you show your ID, if you're disabled, that's not a disability that, you know, is visibly recognizable. How do you, how do you say that, I'm disabled, and therefore I get this discount? So, we have to figure that out.
So, somewhere in the near future, we'll be getting the rates that the council will eventually be voting on, is that correct?
Correct, right now, is that this is a call for public hearing, and this is a discussion on changing the ordinance to be set the rates by resolution, and on the next committee meeting, you will be getting the proposed fee structure, and I can provide the backup of how we determine those rates. We talked about that on, I believe at the last meeting, because Ms. Carraso brought it up, similar to what Mr. Erickson brought up, with regards to how we compete with private courses, and how we also compete with other public courses, such as Capitol Hills or Colony. So, I will provide that backup to you, however, this is right now just to change the ordinance to the set by resolution. So, you haven't missed anything yet.
Okay.
You can still comment on that when you see it, it's just a separate procedure, because a call for public hearing takes longer than the resolution.
Than doing it.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
Is that approved?
No, I need a motion first.
Okay, so, you know...
All those in favor?
You're just discussing what is going to be seen at the public hearing, or you moved the public hearing the last meeting, and you don't require a motion on this until the ordinance gets passed.
Okay.
It's for discussion only.
Anything else to come, it's for Health and Recreation. Okay? All in favor?
All right, I'm gonna call the order City Development and Planning. I've been remiss in not welcoming Mr. Kozier to the table. Very happy to have you here. First item on the agenda is the authorization to enter into an agreement with AECOM USA for design service for the Oak Street Bridge. And I'll just kind of preface this discussion by saying that I did sit in on the meeting when staff were looking at the different proposals that they had received. Mr. Winkler is still working on writing up a formal process for all of this, but, so we're still working on that. This particular situation is slightly different from others that we have dealt with, and I'll, Mr. Wong, explain that.
What you have in front of you briefly is a letter of recommendation from the committee, the Evaluation Committee, to the council regarding the Oak Street Bridge. The Oak Street Bridge is a federally eligible bridge that was on the tip, which is the Transportation Improvement Program list. It was on the tip several years ago for replacement of the bridge. Under a new initiative called Moving Ahead for Progress, MAP 21, those type of projects were sidelined until such funding would be enabled, and we moved into a preservation era. Since that time, the bridge was closed, April of last year. It was agreed on by the CDTIC to move the Oak Street Bridge into a preservation project, and an amendment was passed doing such, which would allow us to put out an RFQ, which is different from an RFP, as the federal guidelines for these type of projects not allow price to be an option in selection, they are strictly qualifications-based. The committee gathered together, we reviewed the nine proposals that we got, but I'd also like to state that the proposals were received from a select list, the LDSA, which is the local developments selection organization. They are a committee that we select, we pre-select firms based off, and they are allowed to compete for federally work for three years. So, this was not a open-to-the-public kind of thing, this was a pre-selected list for our region. We go out with the RFQ, which is a simple borrower plate, and you have to submit a notice of intent. Out of the 15 firms on the list, we received nine notice of intents for this project. Out of the nine, we deem that AECOM was the best, most qualified firm for the job, and that's the recommendation firm.
Questions? Ms. Porterfield?
In times past, when we, I know the RFQ's different from the RFP, we kinda see the names of the other groups that, even though it's a select list, but I don't, I see here just the legislation.
No, it was, it was invited just to come forward with a letter of recommendation. I can, I can tell you verbally what, who they were, they were Barnum Judas, Club Harbor, Creighton Manning, Urban Anthony, Spectra Engineering, WSP Sales, and I believe, how many do I got up there? Is that about it? Greven Peterson. That was the list. They're all some of the largest firms in the area, and then AECOM, which was the selection.
And so, this, you said this was based on just their qualifications?
Qualifications, they submit three-page qualifications that is supplemental to what their original LDSA packet is. Their packet is quite considerable of all their experience and qualifications. They say who the personnel that you'd be working with on the job is, how they feel the structure's gonna be, and then we get two pages of how they feel that the project should be progressed. And after reviewing those five pages, that's how we came to our determination.
This firm apparently has really some experts in bridge work, but I think made them, I'll stay on the committee.
Have they ever done work for us? Have they done work? Not in my past, but I can't dispute that before my tenure.
Not here.
Not in the city's, okay.
Ms. Porterfield?
Where are they from?
They are out of Lakem. However, AECOM is the number-one largest engineering firm in the world.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this. All right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Final discussion here on the legislation deleting obsolete boards and commissions. And I know you have the list of the different ones that we are looking to remove. Does anybody have any questions?
I would just add, I've gotta put in an effective date with respect to that, but I believe the rest of it is set, and I do have to check, and we may have to make the effective date January 1, six, uh, 15. When is your come up? Ever. January 1, 2016.
And what is that?
There, what I am checking is whether or not the legal authority of the mayor can be either expanded or diminished during his or her term, whoever is there. And we may have a prohibition saying that we can't do anything to diminish... And we may have a prohibition saying we can't do anything to diminish what the mayor has with respect to anything during the course of his term, just like you can't increase the mayor's compensation during the course of his term. So this is something that we have to-
It applies also to elected officials, so you have to cycle it too.
Right.
Otherwise, you've got to put it in the ballot as a referendum, it makes it more expensive, complicated process. It gives everything everybody wants, there's obligations.
These committees have been there for several years anyway, so they're all committed anyway.
Right.
Yeah. Other? The mayor board, I just sit down, I think it is.
So, then they just reiterate here, we're talking about the mayor advisory committee, the environmental conservation commission, sorry, I'll skip one here, the police objective review committee, and the parks and recreation committee, so.
Well, not the committee, just the two subcommittees up there.
Two subcommittees, yeah.
Right.
Right. Yeah, the two city and park and colonial festival, I'm sorry. Yep. All right, so, and we'll keep moving this forward.
I'm moving.
And I guess I'll entertain a motion then to approve this, okay. Move second.
And the effective date is not till January 1, 2016?
Correct. That would be the last line of the legislation.
Okay. Mr. Porterfield, will you second that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. And ceremonial resolution for the ancient order of Hybernians, so.
Happy to move it.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. There's nothing else to come before City Development and Planning, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Okay, I'll come up. Call to order government operations, amending ERP application, Metroplex did a new cleanup for property along Van Geisinger Avenue, Mr. Folster.
You also have received a memo from me, and very simply, this is a continuation of work that commenced in the Broadway South parking lot last year. And Metroplex did everything with respect to that lot, the Daniel's Amendment, I gave you the resolutions that were drafted. Who's that? Oh, all right. Just ask her, just, I just said that. Yes. My good friend. You have a lot of them. All right. Matthew, how old are you? That's crazy. Do you find these?
They're all separate.
Take one, pass down. I wrote it, I know what it says. All right. No word. You're cleaning up Broadway South Lot, to encompass what has, for sake of discussion among various groups, been called a postage stamp, there's a small piece of property on the southwest corner of the Broadway South parking lot, stone's throw from the old way station down there, that has been cleaned up, and in the process of cleaning that up, they found that the contamination continues along the west side of Van Geisinger Avenue, running south. And DEC wants this cleaned up and the cost right now is estimated to be in the vicinity of $900,000. ENCON through the downfield fund is coming up to approximately $800,000. And so the balance, there are still discussions going on with Metroplex, but a substantial portion of that is going to be covered by Metroplex. And so it's just a process of amending the original application that was made for the cleanup of the south connected to the lot. We're amending it a second time. It was amended one time by this body. The resolution is in the stuff that was passed out, 2007, approximately a year ago. I'm not sure exactly when, but this is just a second amendment. It will be followed the same process.
And this is the property that was privately owned that we-
It is not privately owned, but either John Law personally or High Bridge Development does have a long-term lease with an option to purchase. And that goes back to the early 2000s, I want to say mid-2002, 2003, on and through there. I believe it's a 20-year lease.
And right now, so the, right now, the cost to the city is $100,000?
In that range, yes. No. That's what has to come up over, that has, that amount has to be paid over and above what ENCON is going to pay. But the final amount that the city has to come up with will be determined after Metroplex does it, does its thing and it may, it's going to pay a significant portion.
This has expanded slightly over the years. The city has paid nothing for this, Metroplex and DEC have picked up all the costs cautiously optimistic, that's how it's going to end. There's a chance we would be on the hook for a little bit, but just to clean it up and get it behind us and continue to move ahead with this cleanup, with this expansion, obviously you'll have found additional deposits or residue on the site, the expanded site.
Questions? I have a question. Yes, so, so sorry. I don't know why I was just ringing too far back here. Okay, I guess I'll just change my seat. Well, actually, my question really, I'd like to, first of all, read the legislation a little bit more before, you know, because we just got the latest email today, but also, I mean, how soon can we have a number of what the city is going to have to put in? I know you're expecting it to be a small amount, but-
Maybe nothing. Probably it's that it's, those are the estimates that are out there now, they've done the estimates and we've passed them, it's the one on the high side where the work has actually been done and we're able to do it, or less than what some of the numbers have been, anticipate that look and continue with this project, this phase of the project.
But we don't have a real number. I mean, we know $100,000 that we, that's between Metroplex and the city, we just don't know the city's amount.
That would be the high side in the worst-case scenario.
No. Very good.
So, just so we want us to, to move this to, I mean, I haven't had a chance to read it, I just haven't had a chance to read through it. I got it. But we can certainly move it and then if there's any issues, we can talk about it.
Yeah, caucus, right.
No, we can roll call it. Okay. Correct?
Yes, you could do that.
I mean, just in the interest of time, so it's not, I mean, is this time-sensitive? Can we put it on again for two weeks without a big deal?
There were a number of issues in coordinating some of the stuff between Metroplex and the city and ENCON, and we have gotten those issues resolved. We were originally planning on putting this on in December and it has been moved a couple of times while we were resolving issues and there's some urgency in getting things moving because they want to get all the work done this, this year, this construction season. So if we could proceed with it tonight, that would be appreciated. Well, moving on, Jim, again, to review if you have any problems, Mr. Porterfield, in terms of quality we have.
Because we have a memo on it that's dated January, so, you know.
That one, that goes to Metroplex. It goes to Metroplex.
It's just been, yeah. I just haven't had a chance to read that.
Simon.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
But we know we'll be looking for some more information much before Monday, or if we have some questions answered.
Please let me know if you do have questions, so if there's something that I can answer, I'm doing, Metroplex or DEC will answer.
Yep. Very good. Okay, we're going to review draft legislation, propose change to Chapter 255, the city code concerning water meters, Mr. Folster.
As I mentioned to you a while ago, sorry, the city wants to install water meters and there are approximately, I think we've got a memo on this.
I think we got it.
Yeah.
Yes. Approximately 1,500 water meters throughout the city for this, various commercial properties. And what we're looking to do is to use new technology so that it's not necessary to go and have those meters read by a human. And right now, there are two different possibilities, one is putting up a tower where the tower can bounce off the meters, the other one is setting it up so it would be where you could run a vehicle around the city and vehicle ping the meters to get the readings. And there are a number of meters, a lot of our meters are old, so they should be replaced anyway. And this is a process where the city is going to be replacing the meters and using new technology. And because there is going to be such an influx, no, wrong word, such a high number of meters to be done, rather than it just being permissible for city personnel to install the meters, this allows for agents, people hired by contractors, to be hired by the city to work on installing the meters. The other thing it does, when the budget was passed, there were certain revenue lines put in place and you will see that there is a table towards the back, starting with 255-74, new water rates, and those are the numbers that are going to be necessary to derive the revenues that you put into the budget, when you approved budget last fall. So the rates are now in line with the budget that was passed. So those are the two things that the changes in Chapter 255, the conversation.
Questions? Mr. Erickson?
I'm sorry. I guess one of the things that doesn't look like it was modified, but just in the first page, it says 255-47, right to order metering. And it says, Department of Wastewater reserves a right to order a meter to be placed on any service or take out a meter and place the consumer flat rate whenever, in the opinion of the director of the Department of Water and Wastewater, it is to the best interest of the city to do so. So it seems very arbitrary, I guess, in terms of when we decide, it's not really specified. And how do you, I mean, I think we all know residential generally is flat rate and commercial would be metered. What does it say that year? I mean, is there an option for the, you know, somebody to say, well, hey, you know, Vince, let's put a meter on your house and, you know, Marion, you're going to have to have a flat rate, right? I mean, shouldn't it be kind of specified in what cases we do which that it's not arbitrary? Who would not, right? Who would know if someone's being inconsistent in their application of the rule?
We did not look at that section because that was not an issue that was before us, but if you want to make changes to that, we could, we could consider that. And this is coming up for a public hearing Monday night, this is not to pass the legislation. So if you are of a mind to make changes, if you want to let me know now or after the hearing, based upon whatever comments are made at the hearing, we could do that. But just let me know as soon as you'd like changes and I'll try and come up with the language to accomplish what you want.
Mr. Porterfield?
Thank you. Being a former licensed master plumber, that's in Buffalo, New York, I have a couple of questions here. Reare the meters, we're talking, this is only, we're talking commercial, you sound right, okay? So if you go to 255-50, you're saying the meter should not exceed one inch. Certainly, no, commercial buildings are bigger than one inch.
As, you're right, but over one inch, the property owner has to pay for.
Well, that's not how I'm reading it, that's-
That's, these are the meters to be furnished by the city. Right. If you're over one inch, you got to obtain-
The business has to purchase it.
Right, and it's got to be compatible with our system.
Okay. And the, the agent, the authorized agent, shouldn't that be a licensed master plumber, a licensed plumber contractor to be the installer? I mean, who else would be a licensed or authorized agent? Who are we thinking about in that respect?
Paul, it can't be John Mulder.
He installed my meter later than I, he probably has, come on.
The, and if this is something that you want to put in here, I can certainly change the language, but if you want to be licensed plumber, licensed master plumber, if you want something like that in there, when Paul LeFond was talking to me, he wanted to keep as much flexibility as possible for the city. It's hopefully only going to be a one timeframe to get all of these meters done, and then you're not going to be using the people on a regular basis after that. And, I'm sorry, I'm not a plumber. I can't, I don't know if changing the meters is going to be more than disconnecting two unions and then putting a seal on it. I don't know how complicated a job it is, but, and, you know, I know that there are many things where the knowledge of the master plumber are extremely important, I just don't know if that's true.
I think a licensed plumber, I mean, we could check with engineer or check with whoever. I just think that's a very important part of it.
Okay.
Especially, I mean, that's part of our code anyway, isn't it? When we go for permits, when we're filed for permits in any work, you've got to have the licensed plumber doing the work, in respect to that, I just think this is very critical and I really think it's something that we, but let me follow, are all businesses are metered or they're nats? I'm just taking, they, they all aren't metered right now.
In theory, that's what's in place.
That's, okay. We do have some that are not, they're nats.
So if someone decides they should be flat rate, they can be flat rate. We don't know who that is, but somebody will decide.
Most of it, I understand, is, is involved with the utilization of a building. It was residential at one time, has moved to a commercial application now.
I'll talk with folks down the hall. Well, very good. Let's just public hearing, so I'll follow with that.
Paul Fonda would be the person who-
Okay.
Just as a point of clarification for Mr. Erickson, although 255-47 says anybody can decide, 255-46 explains what businesses can be metered. Do you know what I mean? So that takes the residential part of it out. I just don't want anybody getting nervous out there that owns a home and all of a sudden the city can come do this, so just a point of clarification. I mean, still, we might want to have some clarification as to what businesses get flat rate versus metered, but you had mentioned residents and that's not part of this.
Because I mean, I think, I think clearly, I would make the assumption that there are some people who probably prefer to have metered.
Of course.
And some people would prefer to have flat. You're using a lot of water, especially. I'd like to have a flat, that I'm only living in my house, you know, four months a year and I'm in Florida and I'm going to want a meter because I'm not going to pay for it, okay? So-
Which is why I'm offering the clarification, because this is particularly for businesses in the, in the preceding paragraph. Did somebody else have a question? Sorry, Mr. Plutus.
Mr. Paul, so you mentioned a tower and possible vehicle with a transponder. Do you have a cost?
Do I have one?
Cost associated with these two items?
I don't, but I believe that it was part of the budget.
Capital budget, I have it.
Capital budget that you passed last year. And I believe right now that they are leaning towards going with one where it's going to be with a vehicle because it's more flexible, is that? Okay.
Yeah, that's- Yeah, National Grid has it too. That's what we have.
And, yeah, so this is, you're out of my category, or out of my field of expertise here, but I think that that's the way they're leaning. But they're doing the final review on proposals and costs and so on right now.
Okay, yeah. Thanks.
Okay, other questions? Comments? And are we, sorry, we don't have to move anything on this?
No, because it's time for a public hearing.
Yes. Okay, very good. Okay, OSN Video slash Editing slash Broadcast, Mr. Thor.
This is just a, reissuing the purchase contract for the broadcast of the city council and committee meetings. For $12,000 a year, what that breaks down to is $200 for each committee meeting and $300 for each council meeting. Two of each, each month.
Questions, comments?
No, I think they do a great job.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any other business to come before government operations this evening? Oh, Mr. Erickson?
Just quickly, above the water, how's Paul doing with amending the code for, anything happening with, it's quite a while since we talked about that.
Yes, he is working on it, and I expect that that will be something that will coming up for action by the council in the foreseeable future.
But we're not enforcing that.
That's why now is, that's not being enforced.
That's my concern.
Should we put that on for two weeks, for three? Get that on for discussion, Mr. LeFond, in two weeks, please. Follow. Any other business? Most adjourned?
Some moves.
Second? Aye. Next one, moving along.
Call to other public safety. Review draft legislation prohibiting the sale of a single cigarette, Mr. Paulson.
This, I don't know if anyone's handed to you previously, but there is a concern about some convenience stores selling single cigarettes. And that is prohibited under state law. However, it is one of those things that is not often enforced through the regular channels for the enforcement of state laws. So what we're looking at is making it part of the code so that our code enforcement officers and other police, we are able to write the tickets and prosecute the offenses in city court as a regular code offense. There are other sections that will set fines for the various offenses within the chapter where this would be going on the initial conviction, on the first conviction, it would be a fine up to $250. So it's very short, very simple, just can't sell loose cigarettes. It's my understanding that they are often being sold in the city now for a dollar a piece. So I haven't gone any that way, I don't suppose. But I understand that's not an uncommon practice.
I can't move it fast enough.
I know. Go ahead, Mr. Public Attorney.
You're saying that the first time there were being charged $200 and then up to 250 and then after that, it's higher?
Yes.
And this is just a call to public hearing.
Yes, a public hearing. First 10 stores in, and I besides those 10 stores generated just under 3,500 calls for service in the last 24 months. And they acknowledged they might do this, they indicated they're going to stop it, but Commissioner Bennett, Chief Phil Cullen emphasized that it's gonna stop one way or the other.
Can I ask for me the calls for service in the loose cigarettes?
This is at the neighborhood stores, the corner stores. The first 10 stores that we had in generated just under 3,500 calls, primarily police on fire calls in roughly a 24-month period.
And so it's part of what they're selling is that?
Right. It's the atmosphere that they create where it fosters some drug activity, it's kind of a cavalier approach to retailing and some of the things that they're doing are improper or illegal, just tightening it up. The standard is higher, we want them to create value in the neighborhoods and reflect well on the community and not foster criminal activity either on their premises or adjacent to it.
I mean, it's against the law, state and federal, so.
Just the problem is, it's one of these things that it's unobliging to be illegal, just a little or no enforcement. We're gonna now give our police department the ability to enforce it and the potential to generate some revenue from it if we can, you know.
Does the county get involved with this or don't they with regulations?
Not the singles ones. What they're doing now, they're actually, they are actually, I'm sorry, they are, it's like youth girls involved with it. They're actually going to some of the stores now throughout the county, sending youth who are underage to purchase cigarettes.
Yeah, no, I meant as far as breaking the seal on cigarette.
It's not a local, it is a state taxation and federal regulation that governs that.
Let's double it.
No, because we've already, we've already, we already...
Don't move it again.
You missed it. You missed it.
Let's turn down.
We love you.
Remember that.
All right, she wanna move it.
We good?
Excited.
Put you down for next committee meeting. Do we ask the most, you preserve it?
LaRosa Automotive, Mr. Powell.
Evening.
Good evening, Chief.
We, we, the police department, are requesting to designate LaRosa Automotive as a single source vendor to install our emergency equipment in our new police vehicles. They are a reputable city company that we've been doing business with for approximately 10 years. In the past, these items were on state contract, but as of right now, they're not, hence is why we're here.
Chief, how many cars are looking to fit up?
Four. Two are in now and two will be in any day now.
Are there other firms that, other companies that could do this work in the vicinity area?
Not, not the companies that are of his caliber. There's a company in Newica, Glens Falls, Pittsfield, that we did some precursor review on, but nothing really thorough. However, they're just logistically too far away.
That's the city of Underville?
Yes.
That's good.
I mean, there's probably some local vendors. In fact, I know there are, but not at this caliber and there's been issues.
Does the police department have access to bid net that the city uses?
To bid?
To bid net, yeah. We've worked really hard to put all of our stuff out of bid and get some competitive rates. So wondering if the police department has, you know, access to bid net where we can go out and bid on this.
Well, we, again, we never had to because it was, all the equipment was on state contract.
Yeah.
But right now, it's not. I'm sure eventually there will be. So it's probably a one-time deal, hopefully.
Mr. Court.
Oh, okay, you said, well, my question was how we decided they should be the single source vendor, but additionally, you said we hope this be a one-time deal.
Well, because if it's on state contract, then it's really a moot point for approval.
So we expect to go back to state contract?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So this is, you think just this one time for these four vehicles?
More than likely. I'm a novice there. Actually.
So I got questions here. So in terms of, they're not on the state contract, how is the pricing that they're proposing now same as what it was when it was on state contract or is the price higher now that it's no longer on state contract? Or did you do a job and is it lower than when it was on state contract?
No, the prices are 2011 prices that he gave us. I also did a comparison of, I think it was 2013, maybe 2014 prices, which are considerably higher. And I do have some prices from the company where we purchased two of our vehicles and they are a lot more higher than LaRosa.
The second question is where is this LaRosa located? I'm sure where I can help.
His address is Altamont Avenue.
Okay.
1100.
Yeah.
Is that in the city?
Yes, it's in.
In the city? I'm trying to picture where it could be.
It's actually right around the corner. It's on...
It's just the way it's loaded in.
What's it name, Mr.?
Cross Street from Vagastino.
Yeah. Cross Street from Vagastino block.
Almost close to Chrysler.
Yeah, I know, exactly.
Any more questions? Do you have a question?
No, sir. I'll move this.
Uh, for a second?
Second?
On the favor?
It's not me. It's Lisa.
I thought I was in here somewhere.
You're sitting there, right?
You know, I'm, no, I didn't. I'm just, I struggle with not going out of bid. You know, we've worked so hard to go out to bid on our stuff and I, what kind of a timeframe are we looking at here?
Well...
Do you have ample time to go out to bid on this so that the taxpayers know we're doing something fair for them?
We have, we have equipment right now that we have purchased. Two of the vehicles came in about a month and a half ago and the warranty course is on. We have some other equipment, such as the computer, that we purchased last, don't quote me, but I think it was probably last fall that, that's on warranty. So, and those items are sitting there.
Well, you know, I've said this before, I'll say it again. I'm one voice. If my colleagues feel comfortable with this, I'm not gonna make a big stink, but I just feel like it's something we've pushed again and again and again that we want to go out to bid on stuff so that we really are sure that we're getting a fair price. So if everybody else is okay with it, I'm willing to go along for the ride, but if anybody else has concerns, I'd like to see it go out to bid.
Well, I think he said it gave 200 about the price and also, it appears to me, correct me if I'm wrong, that this isn't something that just anybody can do in terms of outfitting police cars.
That's correct.
And that.
Yes.
So it takes a special skill set.
Special, and he has certifications in some of the equipment that we'll be installing. So if we have problems, issues, we go right to him and he fixes it, takes care of it.
He's right here.
Convenient. It's good.
The nature of this earth having by police cars, they get more and more sophisticated in the electronics, lighting and other radio equipment that are on the vehicles. And this lagged for some reason. We purchased the vehicles normally state contract for the police vehicles, has this as a companion bid so that when you buy a police car, you can look to see who the local vendor is to outfit the vehicle. And I expect that'll be coming out sometime in the near future, but there's just this window now where that's not on the state contract. But again, LaRosa has had the state contract for...
Good 10 years.
At least 10 years. And a reputable firm who happens to be in the community and this pricing structure Chief outlined again is fairly, I should say very competitive.
2001, yeah.
Yes.
Well, fairly competitive, whatever price they give us, it's not quite good enough, but it's, they are a reputable firm that for these four cars, it'll allow us to move them back out, get vehicles on the street.
Yes. He has, he has over 100 state, local and federal municipalities that he...
Yeah, I know the question is reputation for one moment. That's not, it's not about Mr. LaRosa or his business, has nothing to do with it. So, I mean, again, like I said, I'm one voice, I'll move it, but if other people have concerns, it may come back around.
I'll second.
Second, on the favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business before public safety?
Will Dager.
Second. On the favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Auto order claims.
Public service. Public service and utilities.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't expect that.
I want to go in order.
Yeah, that's right, we've been out of orders.
It's just the claim is so exciting. Auto order, public service and utilities.
Sitting in for...
Is...
Chris Wallace.
Okay.
Better looking at these two.
Packer body.
Hi, everybody. What we have before you is the award for furnishing installing the refuse Packer body. This Packer body was not available on New York State contract, so it went to bid. We received one bid from CEJJ, even though this was put on bid net and it was advertised in the paper. This is a, I guess, a specialty item. We have one bid. So this is just for the Packer body. This is not for the cabin chassis. The cabin chassis will be purchased separately on state contract.
Are there any questions?
One of you, if you, is this within our budget that we as coaches are allowed for this?
I would like to defer that if I could. Is this, I mean, it says it's purchased or could be charged the capital budget. It says it's within. However, it was in, within the original capital, but I, yeah.
That's a yes.
Mr. Erickson?
I got a couple of questions. One, this is, we're getting two, it says here, but we're getting one or two? Two. We're getting two, so it's 100? Eighty-two thousand a piece. Eighty-two a piece. What is it? I don't know what it is. The body is, when you see on the recycler, it's the right side driveway. It says here where you pull up, load into the side, it's a button, it packs it into the back. Okay. So it has hydraulic cylinder that pushes everything into the back, that's what I believe. So it's, these are the trucks that are driven on the right side.
Yep.
So along the curb, they load up, one man operation, load it up, hit a button, packs it into the back. So I think these are recyclers mostly.
They don't stop.
I don't think these are our garbage trucks. These are recyclers. These are recyclers. Left-hand turns are a little scary.
Do we have a map just so the guy doesn't fall out of the truck when he starts?
Any other questions or discussions?
That's pretty fun.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Second. All of us in favor? Aye. Anything else to come before public safety? Public service and utilities. Secondly?
Second.
All of us in favor?
We were right, weren't we, Chuck?
Yes.
I took a quick look at the new yellow sheet.
I went up one, one committee already.
Motion for executive session.